I will call the June 27th City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a duty and a justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Vermont is, Addison County is on a severe thunderstorm watch until 6:15 this evening, so hopefully the power stay on, if not, the generator will kick in gear. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Mel told me he wants to put one under D. We're gonna name it D plus one, because it's gotta come before budget discussion. Any other changes?
What it is, it's about the stairway that is adjacent to the falls. It's about repairing the stairway. That's what they, that's what that agenda item is about.
Does anybody need to disclose about anything on the items on the agenda? Don't believe there is.
Well, other than there is something about the partnership.
There isn't a lot of partnership at all. Refrain from votes.
We bought into heavy guns tonight, right? Okay, we're gonna go right to visitors. And, Donnell or Amy, I don't know which one wants to go first.
Would you like to come up there or is this guy?
You can, wherever you're comfortable.
Okay. Hello. Thank you. Again, thank you for allowing me to take the time to meet today. For those that you don't know, my name is Donnell Byron. I am a local restaurant owner, Vermont real estate broker, as well as Virgens resident. I was invited here today by Mayor Mike Daniels after a lovely meeting we had a few months ago to share a little bit more about the Economic Development Committee of the Virgens Partnership, as I am currently the chairperson. Let me start off by reading to you the purpose statement of the Virgens Partnership Economic Development Committee. Finds new purpose for downtown enterprises, helps businesses expand and recruit new ones to downtown, converts unused space into productive property, and sharpens the competitiveness of the business enterprises. And more recently, at the request of the Virgens City Council, the VP, as I'll call it, Virgens Partnership, has taken on an economic development role embracing the entire city, not just downtown. Although the groundwork is not always visible to the general public, as many economic development initiatives and behind-the-scenes work often takes years to come to fruition, a great deal of the committee, which currently consists of Bill Benton, Anna Charleboise-Allet, Bob Firstin, Connie Houston, and Kevin Rooney, in addition to consistent support from Mel and Rennie, this all-volunteer group has spent countless hours meeting and recruiting prospective business owners that will complement our existing small and larger businesses, improving the lines of communication with major Virgens employers, exploring ideas for under and unutilized spaces and properties, supporting the other VP committees in their endeavors, and much more, all with the sole goal of maintaining and improving the economic vitality of Virgens. Really what this hard-working group does is focus on making connections, as well as creating and maintaining positive relationships with current business owners, current property owners, as well as prospective business owners, property owners, and developers. Since the beginning of 2016, we have worked hard in making about thirty connections, offering confidentiality in many situations as well. We have consistent open lines of communication with the largest property owners of undeveloped and underutilized properties in our city, and we are currently trying to match those looking to come and even, or come here or even grow within Virgens with such property owners. One of the biggest recent accomplishments of the Virgens Partnership Economic Development Committee is helping Bob Firstin and Lillian Kennedy secure a renter for the white portion of Kennedy Brothers. Shaksbury Cider, after considering Rutland and Middlebury as well, chose to make Virgens their home with Shaksbury Cider, which is a nationally, internationally-known hard cider operation. We came together, partnership members, city staff, local business owners, and volunteers, sharing what makes Virgens so special and how we can all help assist in their success. Luckily for us, our city, it helped cement the relationship Bob and Lillian started and will soon be opening their doors, if they haven't already, to their public tasting facility that we, so that we could all enjoy the fruits of their labor. A quote from Colin Davis, one of the owners, is as follows, "We were attracted to Virgens because it feels like a place that is moving forward with a sense of purpose. Everyone we've met seems sincerely excited to have us here." Another project we, along with the assistance of other city departments, are currently focusing on is securing the Neighborhood Development Area Designation, also known as NDA. This is only available to designated downtowns as an add-on designation. The NDA program is a new housing incentive program that helps lower the cost to build housing in areas within easy-walking distance of designated downtowns and village centers, whether it's converting a barn or a wing of a house into more living space, such as an accessory dwelling, or developing an entirely new neighborhood. The NDA program offers benefits to developers such as exemption from Act 250 review, municipal permit appeal limitations, exemption from the land gains tax, and a state wastewater review fee limit to $50, just to name a few. This application process is underway for this designation right now. This, along with other residential development in Virgens, ultimately will add additional housing inventory in our city, in turn benefiting the grand list and our tax base. Lastly, in the coming weeks, we will be launching the new Work section of virgensdowntown.org, which is our partnership website. It's sticking with our headers of Visit, Live, and Play, so we'll now have this Work section as well. The purpose of this section of the website is to entice new businesses to relocate or existing businesses to grow here and to make it easy for them to do so, but by providing them with the info they need at their fingertips. It will provide statistical, demographic, and amenity information, local resources such as tax credits and incentives, local lending institutions, as well as grant-funding organizations, zoning and permitting information by linking to the city website, as well as inventory pages of properties for sale, rental spaces, and investment opportunities available within Virgens. And that is something in the works. We should have that done in the next couple of weeks, and we will be sure to send it your way as well. So, as simple as that.
Before Amy steps up to the mic, does any, anyone have any, on the council have any questions? Danielle? No? Thank you very much for your portion. Amy?
Thank you. Thank you, Donnell, very much, and thank you, Mayor Daniels, for inviting us here tonight to talk about the Virgens Partnership. I am Amy Bodett-Barr, and I have been the Marketing and Development Coordinator for the Virgens Partnership for a little over a year and a half now. Donnell is just one of the many shiny examples of volunteers who I have the privilege of working with, along with our Board of Directors and city officials, all of whom are committed to helping Virgens maximize its potential and put its best foot forward, which is essentially what the mission of the Virgens Partnership is. One of the challenges of a nonprofit such as the Virgens Partnership is to keep the primary focus on accomplishing your mission versus spending most of your time raising the funds needed to sustain your organization. So the financial support that City Council has given us has been invaluable in allowing us to prioritize our mission over our fundraising efforts, although we certainly do manage to do both. In the past fiscal year, we raised about $22,200 in addition to the city's $15,000 contribution. About $4,300 of that money was solicited and earmarked specifically to pay for projects that had a fixed cost, such as the marketing video, picnic tables in the park, the flower baskets on the bridge, and then the rest of the money was raised from special events and our membership appeal, all of which went into the general fund. So despite the obvious challenge of being an organization comprised solely of volunteers and one part-time employee, we really have managed to accomplish quite a bit during our last fiscal year, so I just wanted to share some of those accomplishments with you. In addition to the economic development work that Donnell has outlined for you, here are just a few more things that the Virgens Partnership has accomplished this past fiscal year. The website, which hopefully all of you by now have checked out, the address is virgensdowntown.com. This is a website that we created, but it's really for Virgens. It's not meant to focus on the Virgens Partnership. It's meant to be a website for Virgens. So in addition to marketing Virgens to tourists and prospective residents and business owners, the website serves as a resource to those who already live here. We have a directory of services and businesses, as well as a local events page. Since we launched the site last summer, it has had over 10,000 hits and over 27,590 page views. We use Google Analytics, so we can tell that the most popular page by far is our events page. And what that is, is it just shows a variety of different upcoming events, so anything from the Junior Fishing Derby, to music in the park, to a concert in the Virgens Opera House, to a workshop at the Bixby Library, will be on our events page if it's an upcoming event. And residents have been telling us that they really appreciate that because it provides one source that they can go to at the, right at their fingertips, that finds things going on at a variety of venues and hosted by a variety of different organizations. So I just think that it enhances some quality of life for people who live here. And just really quickly, I also wanted to share these tidbits with you. So out of the over 10,000 hits we've had, about 8,100 have been from Vermont, 1,117 have come from New York folks, 820 from Massachusetts, 483 from Connecticut, 212 from California, 164 from New Jersey, and the rest are primarily from New Hampshire, Florida, Texas, and Rhode Island. So those are the people that are interested in checking us out. Next, I want to talk about the free Wi-Fi that we've helped to provide. So we've installed equipment down at the Outer Creek Basin to provide free Wi-Fi for anybody who utilizes that space, including the many boaters who dock here over the summer. And now, most recently, we've also added some new equipment to provide free Wi-Fi in the heart of downtown, and there was equipment prior to that, but it just really wasn't working because it was outdated. So we have primarily two volunteers to thank for that. Bob Firstin and John Sullivan did really 99.9 percent of the work to provide that. We also want to thank Mel and Doug Holly for allowing us to install the equipment on the Futz Insurance Building, and I think Matt Daniels allowed us to install some equipment on his home as well. So thanks to all of you. Also, I want to talk about the School Street Project that the Virgens Partnership wrote a successful application and that provided a $40,000 state grant to help make the recent School Street Project a reality. So this provided a new sidewalk and grant curbing and ATA accessible, accessibility for the Boys and Girls Club, as well as for Higher Hand Brewery. And that corner of school and Green Street now is really, I'm sure you'd agree, a lot more visually appealing and lively than it used to be. The building itself is much better utilized with the addition of Higher Hand Brewery, and it really couldn't have opened without the new ATA code-compliant streetscape. So that's been a nice thing for all of us, I think. Next is the marketing video. We hired a company to produce a video commercial for the city of Virgens. It's really cool. If you haven't checked it out, it's about a three-minute video, which you can also view by going to our website. We know that it's been viewed over 1,000 times on our website alone, but we also know that it's been viewed over 20,000 times on the Facebook page of the Vermont Department of Tourism. So we made sure to share it with them, and they posted it, and it's been viewed over 20,000 times. So it's very hard to measure that sort of thing, but we hope that it will entice new residents, businesses, and tourists to come to Virgens. So finally, the last thing I wanted to mention was that we applied and were chosen for a six-month pilot program with Efficiency Vermont that's been taking place since January. So it essentially provides an enhanced level of customer services to our residents and businesses. So while this has been going on, they have helped, well, the experts at Efficiency Vermont have held a variety of workshops and open houses. They've done some personal visits to businesses as well as residences, and they have visited roughly 20 businesses and conducted 25 home visits to advise people about the ways they can save money by conserving energy. And the Virgens Partnership facilitated those connections and organizing those efforts. So we certainly do more, but time is limited, and those are the things I chose to share with you this evening. If anybody's interested, I have handouts that list a few of the more things. But again, I wanted to just thank you all for listening and let me know if you have any questions.
Does the council have any questions or any more additions yet to the question? At least the council, there is this page and a half.
Of more specific listings of our accomplishments, so at least the council members should get that, and we have some other available that, if you want to look at it.
Can you drop that, Mel, in an email and we could...
Well, we have them here.
You have it here?
Yeah, we have it here. And I just want to introduce a few of the board members that are here. We have Scott Gaines from Gaines Insurance. Julie Basel, Julie Basel of J&amp;B Marketing. Julie?
Oh, yes.
She did? Okay. Carolyn Thompson, Thompson Law Offices. Anne Kathy Ross here, retired. Been very active. And of course, me.
Very good. For those members that are here, I would like to thank you for all the hard work you do. I had an opportunity to fill in for Mel one time at one of the meetings and just was blown away with all the stuff that was going on behind the scenes. Of course, it's limited on what they can say because some of the activities that are going, so have to respect that quite, quite well. But it, there's a lot of, a lot of balls in the air, and how they keep them all up, I'm not quite sure, but good luck, and if we can help you, let us know. Thank you very much for a very nice presentation. Okay? Any other discussion questions from the council? All right. Next thing we're gonna do is ask for approval for the June 13th meeting. Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Low motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rennie, seconds? Omissions, corrections? Anyone?
I have a couple. Page two, Sam Bushman of the Moore and Pool. City Manager Holly reported. The same paragraph, four lines from the bottom. Volunteerism is great, she advised, but a bigger part is needed, I think what she was trying to say, but the city must play a bigger role, or something to that effect. Next page, Sewer Department Budget. City Manager Holly reported that there are six more years of a $123,402 bond payments. I think that should read of annual bond payments.
Okay.
That was all.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, did you have something?
I got two. So, third page, towards the end of, second to last line of the pool. Sarah's here tonight. I would say Sarah's daughter, Maddie. Everyone likes seeing their actual name in print.
Her name, well, we, we...
Madeline.
Her name is Madeline, spelt a little bit differently than normal. Joan has, Joan actually has the correct spelling, right? Joan, Madeline.
Yeah, but didn't know what the parents wanted their kids listed, but I can say what her name is.
And then Administrator in Zoning Administrator Appointment only has two i's rather than three.
Yeah. Oh, that spell check.
Well, it's underlined.
You may want to check your dictionary. Sounds like you've saved...
It's a computer hiccup.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay, so I had Madeline, and what's Sarah Hale's little boy's name?
Kathy.
Did Ben, which one was it? Ben was here, I think.
I think it was both of them here.
Nope, just one.
Oh, that was Ben.
The oldest one.
If not, all who's in favor, say aye. The polls, so carries?
I abstain.
And Rennie abstains?
Even though I can technically vote, but I wasn't here.
We have enough to make it happen. Thank you, Rennie. Any discussion questions about the warrants?
There's two sets of warrants there, Mike. One, the reason is, is the small packet are actually some of next year's bills and that we pay, there are certain membership dues that we pay that really do be, you know, well in advance of your next meeting, and so the accounting system allows us to keep those expenses separated. Obviously, the checks are cut and gets taken out of our account, but it does not hit our current budget. So there's, so there's two sets of warrants. We're kind of on the front end, usually when we get to the, what you'll get used to having two sets of warrants, because when we get into July, there's bills that come in that are really jones. So you'll end up with a set of bills that are covering the prior fiscal year as well.
You couldn't talk a few seconds longer?
I could. Don't get me started.
I'm gonna get you wound down at the other end.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. All right. Now we'll go to citizens' comments on issues that are not otherwise on the agenda. Are anyone in the audience that would like to offer anything? Ladies first, then?
Sarah Cowan, citizen resident of Virgens. I am the Treasurer of the Addison County Economic Development Board, and, sorry, I have a question. Stan, how are you doing? And I wanted to come in support of Virgens continuing to support the Addison County Economic Development Corp. with its annual payment to the Development Corp. In the past, it's been $3,000, and we would like to ask that the city continue to support ACEDC at that level. I was thrilled to hear what the partnership is doing. The Economic Development Committee from the partnership is, is doing wonderful work, and I think in addition to that, it's important to recognize that we have large businesses here in Virgens, most of whom are represented here. Mark Bellinger is the Chief Engineer at UDC, and Chris Knapp is the CFO at Country Home Products, and the partnership is doing fantastic work in trying to attract new businesses, trying to fill space, et cetera. And I think it's important to note that ACEDC has also participated in a number of the events that were discussed by Donnell. But also, I think it's important to note that ACEDC recognizes the incredible importance of the large employers that Virgens has, and, and the importance that they not only bring to Virgens, but also the county as a whole. The organization, our executive director is acutely aware that our largest employers now are no longer locally owned. There are a lot of discussions going on, both within our organization, within our board, about how to make sure that these, that these businesses stay here in Virgens and continue to offer the excellent employment that they do. We have excellent representation from ACEDC at a state level. Our executive director is very involved and has been ever since she was hired in a lot of state efforts, and those efforts are bringing both support to our large employers, but also to the vast number of employers and businesses in our county. And so I'm just here to, please think hard about the economic development support that you can provide, not only locally to this fantastic organization, but to our county as a whole. It's critical. It's, it's not just one effort. It takes a village. It takes all of us. It takes a city. It takes a county to make these things happen. And, and I think that we can all contribute, both at a, at a wider level. We serve different purposes, but we, yet we also serve the same purpose, and I think it's important that we recognize that it's important to, to support it, both at the city level, but also at the county level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. That is a item that is on the agenda, by the way.
I understand that, but I didn't understand that we could talk...
But those, no, what I said is issues that are not otherwise on the agenda. So if it's something that's not on the agenda, that's what we want to hear about at this point.
Okay.
And then, and then the comments could be made, but you've already made your comments.
Oh, so I won't talk then.
I'll wait until we get to that.
Thank you. It's gonna, it's gonna be a long evening as it is, but we want to take and move along as quickly as we can, because there's a lot of stuff, and most important is the budget get passed. And thank you for your patience. Anyone else that needs to speak on any other issues that are not on the agenda? Okay, very good. We're gonna go right to business, and item A is, which is 2017 Vtrans Small-Scale Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant. You want to do that?
Well, I want to just hand this map around to, to the board members, and I sure do. I got however many you need. Basically, what this map is for, I'm sure all of you in the back can see this map, but this is a map of the city, and the little yellow dots that are on there are just simply the location of all of the crosswalks on our Class 1 roads. Our Class 1 roads include all of Route 22A, and some of us old-timers that call it Old Route 7. For the newcomers, there was a time that Route 7, there was not a Route 7 bypass, and Route 7 used to come from New Haven and Waltham and come down New Haven Road and up Green Street to the traffic light. We often wonder what it would be like if there wasn't a Route 7 bypass. I think we'd all be stuck at the intersection. So anyway, relative, there's been a lot of discussion about the rapid flashing beacons, and, and sure, you know, we'd like to just splash them all over town, but there's, there are actually warrants that have to be met to install a, a rapid flashing beacon. And the reason behind that is, is that you don't want to be having these flashing beacons at every crosswalk, because what happened is, is they just kind of melt into the landscape, and people don't, would not give them any attention at all. So you want to use them wisely and when they meet warrants. And the way that it works is, it's really like a two-column chart. I'll try to simplify this, but when our warrants met for a, for a flashing beacon, pedestrian crossing beacon, is, it depends on this speed limit of the road, first off, and the traffic count on that road, and thirdly, the number of pedestrians likely to be using a crosswalk. So I can tell you that for in Virgens, our, all of our roads are either 25 mile an hour or 30 mile an hour, and chart covers for 30 mile an hour and less, and they are only warranted on, in a 30 mile an hour zone if there's more than 9,000 vehicles per day. And I can tell you that the traffic count on Route 22A is, is around 9,000 vehicles per day. So any, any and all crosswalks on Route 22A, in my opinion, I'm not a traffic engineer, but more than likely meet the, the warrants to have a, based on speed limit and traffic count of vehicles. We probably have some areas on Route 22A that doesn't have the pedestrian count to substantiate a flashing beacon, but that's something that a traffic engineer could figure out. So what this, now, let's talk about the other part of, of the Class 1 roads, which is Roots, Root, which is New Haven Road veering into Green Street, coming up to the traffic light, and I can tell you that there's not 9,000 vehicles per day using that road. However, there are a lot of pedestrians, particularly young pedestrians, making their way to the elementary school and to the swimming pool that need to navigate what many of us called the Bermuda Triangle. And so therefore, that intersection, I, I think that a traffic engineer, if they analyzed it, when you take all of that into, into account, probably meets the warrants. So when you add up all of the yellow dots here, if you were to say, listen, let's just do them all, you know, you count up the dots, and there's probably... you know, you count up the dots and there's probably 14 dots on this piece of paper. I should have counted them, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. So there's around 11 of them. They do cost, just for the, for the equipment, they cost $22,000 per set. I'm, I'm sorry, $11,000 per, sorry about that, $11,000 per set. But that is not the only cost involved with these things, because many times there's work that has to be done on the ground to make sure that you have the proper apron and you have a properly designed and constructed crosswalk, so that it's handicap accessible, has the steel plates. And so it's not as simple as, as purchasing the, the equipment and having Jim Larrel and the crew come up and stick them in the ground. It's more complicated that. So Amy, Amy and I've been working a little bit and Rainey, I think, you know, you, you've certainly been involved with this as well. We have an opportunity to file for some money. The deadline is, I believe, the 15th of July. 13th? They're moving it, they're moving this thing.
12.
We, we probably should, okay?
We're gonna suspend that discussion right now, because we're supposed to have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. And so I'm gonna take and call that public hearing to order. Notice is hereby given that the city of Vgens, city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 27th, 2017 at 6:00 PM. And the Vgens Fire Station meeting room pursuant to 24 BSA 4385 for the following purpose. Pursuant to 24 BSA 4384, the planning commission proposed to amend sections 1.3, 3.1, 3.2, 5.1, 5.2, and the land use map and the appendix of the municipal development plan. A copy of this is on file at City Hall if anybody needs a copy of that. So having said that, at this point, where's my friend? I'm gonna turn, turn, turn it over to Shannon.
It's really if there are any questions or public testimony that anyone would like to give or, or ask about the proposed amendments. This is the time to do it. Basically, we, we're, we're doing an interim amendment. The, the plan runs to 2019. There were some things that we wanted to do in between time. This does not extend that. We still have a more full plan update to complete by 2019. But essentially what, what the, the main pieces that we were doing with this were including the Vgens Downtown Basin Master Plan as an appendix to the plan, so that the recommendations that are contained in that now fall under the municipal development plan and allow us to leverage that a little bit more strongly when applying for grants. And that involves also the update to the community involvement piece. We've updated the facility and services piece, solid waste materials management to comply with what state laws are now looking like. We're proposing to update our energy plan a little bit to include a solar energy overlay district. We've taken some of the, the pieces from the downtown basin master plan and taken the recommendation matrices and embedded those in there, which include things about transportation, et cetera. In our land use, we're looking at going back to a prohibition of ground level residential use in the central business district. The addition of the aforementioned solar energy overlay district. There are two properties that are currently now in the low density residential district that we are proposing to move into the medium density residential district to comply with other areas that are adjacent to them. And that's essentially it.
Is there anyone here to make any comments or recommendations of change to what has been presented? If not, do we need a motion or anything to move this forward or what, what would you like?
What we would like is one thing, the only thing that you, you can close the hearing and then under business, you do need to schedule your, your next hearing.
Okay.
The, the, if, if, let's say if you heard a lot of testimony about, I will tell you that, you know, contained in here is a proposal that would, that will, if approved in its current form, result in a zoning change that will revert the prohibition of residential units on the ground floor. So let's say if you had an, if you had somebody here this evening testifying that, that they don't support the planning commission's proposal to, to again prohibit resident, further residential development on the ground floor, then that's something that the, the city council, in the central business district, that's something that the city council could, you know, have a discussion about and, and come forth with some different language if it so chose before you hold your second public hearing. So you don't have to, you don't need to take any action tonight other than close the hearing. I will tell you that, that my notes got messed, because your minutes to the meeting of November, of May 25th or whatever clearly stated that this public hearing was supposed to be at 6:30. And I warned it for six, because I thought that that's what Cheryl said. So, you know, you know, one of the things that I would suggest that you not close the hearing at six minutes after six, just in case somebody didn't read the notice, but they did read your minutes. And then you need to remember, if nobody else comes in, that at 6:30 you should make another announcement to see if anybody wants to talk about the proposed amendments. It would make me feel a little better, because.
What we'll, what we'll do is we'll recess that and I'll ask Rainey to be my time watcher.
Okay.
And at 6:35, let me know and we will then, if you can help me with that, I appreciate that. Just push this little center button and the time will keep popping up. So, okay, so we will move, and thank you for the, I apologize for any interruption, but trying to stay on that schedule. And here's that 6:15 thunderstorm they said was coming, so.
So what we, relative to the small scale, what we would like tonight from the city council is, it could be one motion, but it's really covering two items really. One is to authorize an application to the 2017 Vtrans small scale bicycle and pedestrian grant for rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Route 22A and, I don't want our motion to say the Bermuda Triangle, but anyway, at the, at the, at the intersection of New Haven, Green and King. And I think, Matt, I guess what I'd like to do is hear from you, I know you're no longer the chair, but you know, whether or not, if I remember correctly, the task force recommended a certain number. It was either four or five or six, and I can't remember that number. And because that's gonna determine what the project is that is gonna be applied for and the, and the budget for that project and the commitment from the Water Tower Fund to represent the local share. So I would suggest that if it, if it was five, then I think that we should be budgeting $15,000 per intersection. So that would be a $75,000 project for five and commit, because it's a 50% grant for the small scale and commit $37,500 from the Water Tower Fund as the local match.
I, we have a street spot now, which was four, four units to be installed. Three on Main Street, one at Green and, and New Haven Road. Is that the only answer you're looking for from me?
Yeah.
Because I do have a question.
Sure.
When we solicited the support of local motion out of Burlington, they were somewhat skeptical as to the efficacy of the rapid flashing beacons, as well as the kind of hoops that the city would be required from a, from the state, I guess, in order to install. Do we feel that those are not a concern for us or?
Well, the, I can tell you the small scale bicycle and ped program is considerably easier than the, the normal, right, David? David Crawford in the back, it's considerably, it's considerably different, all right? But it's not to say that there's no strings. So David could, David's doing some work for us, obviously somewhat related to this program. And so I hear what you're saying about your concern is, you know, time and complication and should we just go it alone? I, I feel as if it's simple, it's, it's worth going after the money. That's my, that's my sense.
Especially if we did a 50% more.
Oh, absolutely. It was the number one recommendation coming out of the task force, I absolutely support it.
Jason from motion, Azia Manway, and said he's very busy and is gonna reach back to us in July.
Okay.
So, and so there's more discussion that will be had later about that part.
David?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear whether the guy did.
He, no, 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 what, what, Matt, because obviously, you know, the grant programs, you know, it isn't free money where you just apply, they send you a check. There are, you know, it's a process, it's a regulatory process. And in some instances, it, it can inflate the cost to a point where, where like, you know, let's just go it alone. I, I really think that in this small scale program for this type of unit, I think that it makes sense to, to go after that money.
Okay.
You know, but it, you know, you know, there's no question about it that, you know, it's, it's probably will cost a little more, you know, in, in staff time and, and in going through the, the request for qualifications, you know, there, there is that on there. But I, I think there's enough benefit to, to go through that process. That's my feeling.
So we need a motion to go forward with this grant application?
Yeah, I'd like to make said motion, Mr. Mayor.
So we go on four, five?
Where are the five, where's the fifth one?
Well, uh, you know, let's go through, yeah, let's go, let's go through the ones that are, that I think are clear. Pretty clear. Bermuda Triangle.
Yep.
Across from City Hall.
Yep.
South Maple Street, North Maple Street.
Yep.
That's one. And McDonough Drive, South Water Street, okay?
There's four.
I have two others that, that do concern me. I think that when you cross the, the, when you go across the bridge, there's three crosswalks across the bridge. There's one of them at Canal Street, there's another at White Street, and there's another at Pantin Road. I, you know, I, you know, I, that is the way that I drive. I see school kids waiting at intersections there. I, I, I don't know that all three of them need to be done, but it would be good to know which one really has the, that has the most pedestrians and would most benefit from that, from that. So I would, that is one possibility of number five. I also think about the crosswalk at the top of School Street. I don't know how many, how many youngsters cross there, but you know, I, I see, you know, that that should be a consideration. But again, it may not have the pedestrian count, doesn't have nearly the pedestrian count of some of these others. So, you know, I'd like to get, I really would like to get one on, on the other side of the river, because I think that there is a traffic calming benefit to them as well. So that would be the, the fifth one.
I, I'm in favor of those, I see how they work on Pine Street, they work well. Coming back from a fire coming off Canal, I saw somebody trying to cross the road and traffic just would not stop for them. Finally, they did. And a similar situation happened yesterday, coming off north across Main up past City Hall. So I mean, it's catch 22. So I, I think that everything you've named is, is some very good locations. And again, too much saturation, we don't want to send the wrong message. People shouldn't develop a sense of security with these things. They're a warning light to advise people that someone is there. You still have to look before you cross.
So we have a motion?
I'll just second the motion.
We have a second, Mel, our. For five? Matt made the motion. Mel seconded it. And any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So opposed, so carried? Okay. All right, Addison County Economic Development Corporation allocation.
Chris Knapp wanted to.
Chris, we'll let you, go ahead and, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. So tonight I want to address you as the president of Addison County Economic Development. Been on the board for about five years. Probably one of the best boards that I've been on. It's dynamic, we get involved in a lot of things. I like to hear the things that are going on locally. Sorry that we have not spoke, Danielle and Amy, but I hope we do. I also wanted, I'm also on the loan committee, I'm the chair of the loan committee for Addison County Economic Development. Also been the CFO of Country Home Products for the last 19 years. So, and I've been involved in a lot of things. I've gone here, we made a lot of donations. I coached baseball, I was the chair of Boys and Girls Club. Went through that troubled period, helped pull them out of that. So I've been here for a while. So first, let me address you as kind of the president, I want to separate like two roles here of what I've done. I'm sure you're aware, as Mel probably kept the board, city council around up to date, on what goes on with Addison County Economic Development. And I'm gonna share something with you afterwards about this. But Vgens has been involved with Addison County Economic Development since its inception, both in funding and board membership. It's been a partnership for a long, long time. You know, way longer than I've been around, probably one of the original members of the, of the board. Robin Chai, the executive director, has really transformed the organization since she's been involved. Her work has been exemplary. I want to repeat that, her work has been exemplary. Over the five years that I've worked with her, the amount of days, nights, weekends that we've worked on projects and she called me about stuff, her energy is just amazing. She's forged a really long-term and great relationship with the city of Vgens, as well as the local Vgens business. And because of her performance, there's, there has been and continues to be strong representation on the board by Vgens businesses. I'm one, Mark Swan, Sarah's here, Sasse's here. There's a lot, we have actually, besides the two major employers that are in this town, we have eight other businesses that are members of Addison County Economic Development. We've also made a lot of loans to local businesses that have helped them get through. So besides being the support that we have provided as Addison County Economic Development, we've accomplished a lot of things here in Vgens. We brought the Vermont Council Rural Development Community Visit Program to Vgens, which resulted in Addison County Economic Development facilitating several meetings for Vgens Economic Task Force. Worked on the revitalization of the Falls Basin area and the creation of the Transportation and Park Task Force. In addition, Addison County Economic Development was part of the team that provoked Vgens and Kennedy Brothers, which led to the Shacksberry Cider location outside of Vermont. We've also made loans to help get Shacksberry here in Vgens. Also, Robin was part of that master plan development. And as I just noted, our loan committee has made a lot of loans to local businesses to not only help them survive, we are a lot of, to stop that measure to make them be able to get financing through all their institutions, but also help them. but also help them grow in the area. So annually, we file a report to say what we're required to with all our accomplishments. I'm going to give you the last three years of reports to get a better understanding, for the City Council to have a better understanding, and for you as the mayor to get a better understanding of what ACEDC has been doing. I think it's really important that you have a thorough understanding. And this, Mel has got this report every year. I'm sure that you've shared it with the board, but I think it's important to get that. So in short, Addison County Economic Development has been very, very good for Virgens. So taking my, taking that hat off as president and talking about myself as a business manager here for the last nineteen years, as well as a taxpayer through our business. We employ over two hundred employees. Hundred and twenty-five are right here at Virgens. Most of our employees reside in this Virgens area or in Addison County. They support property taxes as well as support local businesses. Those hundred and twenty-five people got to eat somewhere every day. They got to buy gas. They get groceries. So they visit a lot of these area businesses. They eat in the restaurants, et cetera. And as fortunate as it may be, recently, in conjunction with our parent company, which is Generant Power Systems, we decided to close, based on really sound economic reasons, our Winuski manufacturing facility. I'm sure all of you heard about this on the news. However, we're very committed to keeping jobs here in Addison County, in Vermont, and preferably here in Virgens. In order to do this, to attract the type of talent we need, CHP needs a vibrant, thriving economy in Virgens. Because our attracting people, we've attracted people just recently from Iowa, Pennsylvania, Texas, California. I didn't have the whole list of where we've been hiring people into the area. We're trying to grow jobs here. And a big part of that is saying, this has to be a thriving community for people to come here. They bring their spouses. They bring their children. They, we need to have jobs for their spouses. So, but all of these people are looking for an interesting place to live. There's a lot of states throughout the United States that can make the claim it's a great place to live. So some of these people choose to live here because there's a lot of good reasons to do it, but we've got to make it into something that, that has that social economic background that they say, I got stuff to do at night. I've got places to go. I've got restaurants to eat. This is a really important part of that relocation. So the type of job, professional jobs we are and will be recruiting for in the near future, really want, we need that type of environment here in Virgens to attract those people. So economic development is critical to the area. And then we see that ACEDC, as wear my hat again, as the CFO of Country Own Products, is a vital part of that. It's why I volunteer my time to be on the board, to be on the executive committee, to be on the loan committee, and to be available pretty much, you know, seven days a week for anything that comes up to help us fulfill our mission. So in short, I hope that the board, sorry, keep calling you the board. I'm just used to dealing with boards all the time, but the City Council passes the support and continues the support for ACEDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Anywhere else? Young lady with glasses?
Hi. I'm Stan Zier. Also, no, see, I'm the in-class. And I am here to encourage the City Council also to continue the support for ACEDC. I am a board member on ACEDC. I'm a local City of Virgens resident, as well as a business owner. I own Stone Cutter Spirits. I've actually had the pleasure many times of working with Stone Cutter, as well as other businesses, Stone Cutter, and event connectivity in Virgens. And the story I kind of wanted to share was that ACEDC was a huge part of Stone Cutter coming to be what it is today. I started the company with my co-founder. We bootstrapped it. And then we turned to banks for loans. And the ACEDC was crucial for that initial launch of Stone Cutter. In addition, they also gave us a second loan when we were looking to expand and grow. And I'm happy to say that now we're able to be doing events in my own community and to be doing events throughout Vermont. And it really was the support of ACEDC that really helped jumpstart my business. On a, on a board member's side, I wanted to share that I'm particularly proud of ACEDC for Robin's representation of our community, of Addison County and our community in the State House. I'm a young Vermont resident, and I'm so excited to see more working people in the legislature, people who are really closely connected to the economic development of the community that I live in, places that I work with, my neighbors, my fellow business people, that they have that voice at that level. I think it's really powerful. And I've been so impressed with the way that ACEDC has conducted itself as a company from the top down. Everyone who works there is so dedicated to making sure that businesses like myself and communities like Virgens have the voices and have the resources and have the connections that we need to build stronger communities and stronger businesses. So as a board member, as a City of Virgens resident, and as a small business owner, I really urge the council to continue the support for ACEDC. And it's really important and vital work that it does in our community.
Thank you. Not the chosen spots, Sarah? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I can't speak anymore.
Yeah, she can.
But I think it's really important that you hear this. This is, this is three thousand dollars for an organization that, when, when you look at this packet and you see what this organization does year in and year out, and the focus on Virgens is critical. Virgens probably has the, the biggest voice on this board right now. And this board runs the organization along with the executive director and two part-time staff. And there are five board members, two, three, four, five, right in this room that have either live in Virgens, have businesses in Virgens, or represent this community. And Jeff as well, representing City Council, is, is now a member of the board. So I can't say enough in support of the organization.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I can basically share just the last three years of annual reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Any other comments? Hearing none? Then, you got any comments?
Well, one of the things, just so that you know, there's, there is, there is an invoice in the current year's warrant to release the three thousand dollars that are, that was allocated out of the current budget. You will not find my signature on that invoice. If the City Council signs that warrant, that in, that check will be released in the morning. Relative to my proposed budget that you will be talking about, and I just want to make that crystal clear to every, everyone in the room, that when you get around to my proposed budget under E, I have eliminated the three thousand dollar payment to the Addison County Economic Development Corporation for FY 2018. And some of you may be wondering, well, Mel, what's, where's, what's the elephant in the room here? Why would, why would all these other organizations be allocating the same thing that we've been allocating for a year, but you've put a zero next to Addison County Economic Development Corporation? And I would be very, I'll be crystal clear as to why I put zero is, I was on the board. I was one of the original early members of the Addison County Economic Development Corporation. I spent years on that board. And they have done a lot of good things. But I ended up with a disagreement with members of the board as to how they handled the executive director's request to run for the legislature. And I have no, I have no problem with an employee wanting to run for the legislature. And if they win, that's their decision. And if they win, they serve, all right? I have a major problem in, in using City of Virgens taxpayer dollars to fund a nonprofit corporation whose executive director is going to the legislature. And I just don't feel that it's appropriate. And I, you know, I, you know, I hear SASS. I know SASS, you know. SASS and I, we, we disagree. I mean, so that's, and I don't, I don't mean to pick on you, SASS, but SASS and I disagree about that. She feels that it, she feels that the executive director running for the legislature, you know, representing the town of Middlebury, you know, who's also the executive director of the Addison County Economic Development Corporation, she thinks that's a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing at all. I, I think that, I think an organization like the Economic Development Corporation, which is an extremely small organization, it's made up of a full-time person and two part-time people. You, you know, so you have to have an executive director, you know, that doesn't have the time, in my opinion, if they want to remain focused on the mission of, of the Addison County Economic Development Corporation. I felt by running for the legislature and being elected, that the organization can lose focus. Now, you'll hear board members talk about how, well, she, you know, she worked countless hours while she was there, and, you know, nothing ever stopped and everything. And I, and I just, I just don't agree with it. I, I just feel that in a small organization like that, you know, I, I could, I could give an example, you know, you know, what if, what if the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club says, I want to run for the legislature? And they get elected, you know, that, you know, her position is critical to the Boys and Girls Club. So I think in some instances, I can see how employers, you know, understand why, you know, like in the case of Chris at Country Own Products, maybe there's some employees at Country Own Products that, that he may feel could run for the legislature and continue to, to fulfill their obligations for Country Own Products, likewise with Mark at UTC, likewise with Sarah at National Bank. I don't, I don't think that that was the case for the Development Corporation. So because of my disagreement with, with the board, I resigned. I just really am not going to go to meetings. And I, I, I felt that it was best for me to get off the board because I just don't, I just don't support it, okay? And I can tell you, if the City Council wants to put three thousand dollars in a budget, I, I'm on to the next project, okay? I mean, it's not, this three thousand dollars, you know, is not a big deal to me, all right? So was, was I sending a message by putting a zero in there? Absolutely. Absolutely. Yep?
Any comments? I need a motion for, or?
Sure.
Yep?
I guess the, the thing that I really respect about the process in the board and the process that you guys have here, especially as it respects to the ACEDC, was that like, Mel had it in the united seat, but the board voted. So everyone in the room voted. It doesn't matter what I think. It doesn't matter what Mel thinks because it's about consensus. And a strong organization that's proven itself year after year and year, and supporting our community, I trust that board, that that board is a leader and a leading that organization. And so the board voted in a way that it felt was most fit. Didn't have anything to do with how I personally felt or how Mel personally felt. It was all the really bright and intelligent business owners and community leaders that voted to send our executive directors to the board. And I think it's made off, it's made it beyond what we would have done. And it's made our community stand out in the state. We're now, we're now getting attention we never thought we would get. And I'm really proud of that. And so I think it's important to remember that we trust the organization, we've proven itself year after year after year. And there was one vote on one day about an issue that's really important to me and to Mel. Isn't it representative of that, representative of guidance of that, of that organization that has really continued to have a work ethic?
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. But at this point, we're going to go to recess, sort of speaking, of this. And it's six thirty, well, Andrew threw the high sign and, so.
Over, over.
In the suspense of everything else, this is just like watching a TV show. Everybody at home, just stay tuned. We'll be back from commercial in a minute. Are there any comments on the public hearing notice? Not hearing any? We'll close that meeting. So we now have to, we, do we want to do it right this second, set a date, or for the next?
That's on your agenda.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, we'll, we'll come back to that. Okay, now, back from commercial. All right. I need a?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue to support ACEDC, not only with the warrants that I believe have already been passed and signed, but that the money be reallocated back into the budget for fiscal eighteen as well.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mark seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. All right. What's that?
Now you can stop the debate.
Now, not quite. No, we gotta, we gotta, no, we're, we're, we're going to come down to that in a minute here. If anybody wants to stay, that's fine. If you're at a point that you need to leave, well, you, you may do so, but we just got another Vermont alert that thunderstorms are good through six forty-one. Got another one coming through. So it may be safer inside than it is out. Okay. And so we're going to go to item C in business, allocations from the water tower fund for the Virgens partnership.
Okay. So the, the reason why this is on the agenda, let me tell you that in the past, the city has allocated fifteen thousand dollars to the partnership. And I will tell you that included in my proposed FY 2018 budget is a continuation of the seventy-five hundred dollars from the general fund, and would recommend that the city allocate seventy-five hundred dollars from the water tower fund as the contribution for FY 2018 to the Virgens partnership. So that that will enable them to, with that commitment, will enable them to work within their budget, both on an expense and revenue basis.
So that's not something that's in the budget? We're just going to take the money?
You need to admit, you, you need, the, the seventy-five hundred is in my proposed budget.
Okay.
And so obviously, once, once that, if that remains in that budget.
Mm-hmm.
That would be allocated. The water tower takes special action by the City Council.
Okay, but that's additional.
That's correct.
Just, that's seventy-five from both, one from budget, one from?
Correct.
Okay.
I will make said motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
By Lo, seconded by Matt. Any discussion?
This is how we've done the fifteen thousand before.
Yeah, I don't know how many years, but it's been a, a few years. Yep.
As long as I've been.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
And I will be abstaining from the vote.
Rennie will abstain. Thank you, sir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. And the next one is amendment to municipal plan, development plan.
Schedule, second public hearing.
Schedule, second public hearing.
So the last time when this was, was given to you, I believe the date was May twenty-six, I think it was. And so you got that, and that's, and you were, you are not allowed by law to have a public hearing in less than thirty days upon receipt of that from the planning commission. And that's why the public hearing was put off, if you will, to tonight. That's your first public hearing. So you are required to have a second public hearing. And based on your schedule, your next regular meeting is on July eighteenth. And so unless the board, unless the City Council wants to make some changes to the proposed amendments, you could, if you so chose, to on motion, set the day of the, of the second public hearing for July eighteenth.
I will make said motion.
So?
Second.
All made a second?
Six thirty.
Well, you, I will try to do better.
Is that on the eighteenth?
It's, we're, we're not meeting the second fourth. We're only meeting on the third, Tuesday in July.
I'll probably get the second fourth down.
It's only eight times a year.
And I'm not going to be here. Rennie's going to run this, run the program.
It's, we're, we're not meeting the second, fourth, we're only meeting on the third, Tuesday in July.
I'll probably get the second, fourth down.
It's only eight times a year.
And I'm not going to be here. Rennie's going to run the, run the program that night. So, unless they skate me in, so.
I won't be here either.
Cheryl, will you be here?
Yep.
Would it be better if we did it at 6:30 versus, for you? Because we, we need, we, I would like somebody here.
Yeah.
Yeah, 6:30 would be better. I mean, I, I can mostly make it here by six, but... I'll keep reminding you, 6:30. I...
Okay, so the meeting will be July 18, 6:30, our public hearing will be July 18 at 6:30 PM.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor of that date, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. Okay, proposed FY 2018 general fund budget.
Okay, so, sorry about bombarding you with paperwork, but first off...
About 35 pages?
No, I, I thought it was 61 actually, but who's counting? So let me, let me first off hand this out. And what this is, this is a revised police department budget. The original police department budget that was in your, in my proposed budget, that was sent out to you on Friday, I met with George this morning and went over a number of things. And, you know, George certainly understands that we need to be careful about expenses and how it hits the tax rate. And so what I, the two changes in here deal with uniforms and capital purchases. Now, George, in his original proposal, wanted to replace the 2004 Ford Explorer that is on loan from the sheriff's department and replace that with a, a new vehicle that would be to the tune of $50,000. What I'm suggesting that we do is we not buy a cruiser this year. However, double up on the payments back to the continuation fund. If you remember last year, the city council voted to purchase two cruisers, and in essence, spread that out over a three-year period by paying $30,000 out of the budget, and then borrowing from ourselves, $60,000 from the Water Tower Continuation Fund, with the intent of paying that back over two periods of time. I'm suggesting to you to pay that back, not wait two years to pay that back. And I just want you to hold that thought as to, as to why I feel that that's okay to do, okay? So just hold that thought. One of the things, you know, Mark, I don't, it's okay, Mark, I want to talk a little bit about, Mark came in, we spent a little time together talking about police department the other day, and about certain things, and I, I want to just go over tasers, Mark, just so, and, because I, I wanted to get a little lesson about tasers, because I knew that we'd purchased some in the past, and I didn't have a really, I'm sure I was fumbling away at the question about tasers, all right? And I'm, I'm a real supporter of tasers, I just am. I, I don't, I don't like guns, I like tasers, and I can tell you, I know how effective they are, you know, because I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of video about when that taser comes out, if you get hit with that, you're on the ground, all right? And it's, I, I don't want to say that people are more afraid of tasers than bullets, I don't want to say that, but I can tell you that if the taser comes out, they're extremely effective. You don't have to shoot them, just ta, just take it out. Anyway, so the history is, is about, we think either five or six years ago, we can't remember whether or not we got a grant or not, but we bought five tasers, all right? And they actually were handled within the department. Everybody is trained to use a taser, but they're kind of handled like you would, you would rechargeable drills, if you will. Like when you got done your shift, shift, you set your, your taser in there. And so it wasn't like issued per person. And, and so sometimes people would show up to work and they forgot their taser at their home, and, and it, it was a little bit strange. So we bought five, and then two years ago, we bought two newer models. And since that time, three of the five are shot, they can't, and they can't be repaired. So we currently only have four tasers. And what we want to do is actually, George requested five, I really feel that we should buy six. I want tasers to be standard issue to a police officer, so that they don't, they're, they bring their revolver home with them, you know, they, they go home fully equipped. I just think that it's a part of the issue. So what, from a budgetary matter, taser has a program that if you turn in your old taser, you get $100 for this, you know, piece of plastic, okay? And they have a program called Taser 60, where you, you purchase tasers and pay for them over a 60-month period. That's what I would like to do, is, is buy six tasers, that gives us, the two old ones get turned in, so we end up with eight tasers, and everybody in the department is, they have a taser. So, so brought, so Mark brought that to my attention, and so I immediately went from five to six tasers. So, so, so anyway, there's no budgetary, there isn't a budgetary impact there, but when you, the, when you take my suggestion of not buying a cruiser but doubling up, that's $20,000. We went back through the uniform budget, Mark, and I think that mine shows that going from $10,000 to $5,000. And I will tell you that about half of that is used up with dry cleaning, but we really are all set with uniforms. So I think that...
Probably don't have to turn over an officer's.
Or gain weight or lose weight, but that's, that's true. So anyway, those are the two changes. So I'm just going to set police aside for a second and go back to, I want to hand out another sheet, which is an updated fund balance. Sorry about that, I can count to four. In your packet, I originally sent out this kind of projection thing, and this one is actually filled in. And so what, what this report does is that, in the general fund, it itemized in our current year what our both revenue and expense budget is, and over to the right-hand column, it shows you what our actuals are. And as it turned out, right now, we planned on spending $100,000 more than we took in in revenue. When you adopted the budget last year and set the tax rate, you used $100,000 out of the $180,000 fund balance carryover. Well, as it turned out, we actually have ended up with $7,000 more in revenue than expenses. So we didn't use the 100, so we didn't subtract from our fund balance by 100,000, we actually gained another $7,000. So that's the good news. The bad news is, I do not have... You can go right to the bottom. I do not have a lot of confidence that we're going to meet the level of delinquent taxes that we did last year, 60 days into the budget. If you remember correctly, we really did real well. I think that, I think the number is either $22,000 or $25,000 in delinquent taxes, six months, six, 60 days into the next fiscal year. I can't remember what we were started, what we started with, but I can tell you that that $72,000 is really 75,000, right, Joan? Because that money is, that's an overpayment that we owe a guy?
Yes.
Mr. Black, okay? So it's not 72,000 in delinquents, it's actually 75,000 in delinquents. I, I do not feel confident that we're going to, that that 75,000 is going to turn into 25,000 60 days out. I really don't. I think we can get half of it, but I, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to say, we're gonna, we're gonna get it all, but I just don't think that we are. I think it'd be too optimistic. So, so I predict that our delinquent taxes could go up 25,000. The accounts payable, there are a lot of bills that come in during the month of July for expenses in the previous year, i.e. electricity, phone bill, charge cards, you know, purchases that are made, that maybe there's not a pack and slip, made it to my office, and, and so there are some bills. And that, I've estimated to be about $10,000. I will tell you that it could be more, because I am waiting on the flagger bill and the grinder, the grinding bill. And so that $10,000, it might even be 20, all right? I'm still waiting on those bills, but I, I'm going to say it's somewhere between 10 and 10 and 20. So after having done the, so now let's go back and talk about the budget again, all right? And if you look at my proposed budget for administration, I have a proposed budget of going from 384,000 down to 380,000. So that's just a slight decrease, and frankly, I'm not really sure why that's down.
One thing that's not in there, Mel, is your and Joan's pay increase.
That's correct.
So...
That's correct. Yep.
We need, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but that needs to be done soon, as to what they're going to get for a pay increase.
So let me tell you where the, where the chunk is of the 384 down to 380. It's all in City Hall building maintenance, going from 10,000 to 4,000, and that's because any additional work that happens at City Hall, I'm going to be coming to the city council of a capital nature for allocations from the Water Tower Fund. So that $4,000 is really just to, you know, fix the toilet, fix the furnace, pay the alarm system, it's not about doing the conference, it's not about that. It would, that, when we move forward with that project, I'd be coming to the board with an allocation request from the Tower Fund to do that, to do that capital improvement. So that's where, that's how that is able to drop. The police department, again, don't look at what is part of your budget, you need to use the replacement page, and that's going from 866,668 to the newer number that I just handed out to you of 898,600. I will tell you that there, the one, it doesn't, it does move the numbers a little bit, but we currently are operating, we are currently operating with five full-time officers and four part-time officers, and that's because we haven't replaced Brent Newton, who got done in May. And what George would like to do to maintain stability is to, instead of hiring one person, hire two full-timers from, from our part-time group. And so we would end up with, instead of having six and four, we would end up with seven and two, all right? And so obviously, there, you know, there's a, there is a cost impact of adding a full-time employee because of, because of benefits, but it's not, you know, it's not a, it's not a huge difference. And one of the things that can happen is if you become too reliant on part-timers, you end up losing them, because they, it's okay if somebody wants to just do some part-time work, but there's some volatility there. So to go to seven and two, to me, brings greater stability in the department. So that's, that's what, that's what that's about. The Public Works Department budget, what I've proposed, there is some additional money for, for sidewalks. I've left paving and, and stormwater the same, and you can see that that budget is up about 15,000 or 16,000. The project that I'm really most interested in, that could come out of Tower Fund, I really feel that we need to do something with our recycling building. And it really, it, well, it needs, it's on my list to Sherman, to be honest with you, Mike, for Job Corps. I think that that might be a perfect Job Corps project. I don't know if painting is the direction I would go in, but I mean, I really can't stand the looks of this, of this building, and something's got to, something's got to happen. So I've got some money in our budget, which is really about materials, it's not about a lot of labor. So it's really more of a, it's more about the message that I'm sending you, that I really want to do something with that building, it's embarrassing. The, the other, you know, the voter appropriations and the other general expenses, obviously you need to move the $3,000, that number's got to change to 3,000. And the long and the short of it here is, is that when you use the modified police department budget, and then add the $3,000 motion that you recently passed on Addison County Economic Development, you need $118,000 of your fund balance to keep the tax rate at 79 cents. And my projection is that we will have somewhere between 142 and 152, and I can safely say that if, you've got, none of you have ever, we've never had this discussion, I talked to Mike about how, how we ever have done it this way in the past. I sure wish that we would have started talking about budgets at least a couple of weeks ago, not wait until June 27th. But I, I do listen to y'all, that, you know, that you all don't like to see taxes go up unless absolutely necessary, you know, you don't need to send me a memo about that, I get it. And so that was in the back of my mind, that we try to have a budget that maintains a tax rate of 79 cents. And I actually, after working all day today, getting all these bills paid, making telephone calls, and doing all this, I, I got it. And I, that we're not talking about a lot of room here. You know, if you think about what we did last year, we had 180,000, we used 100, all right? So you got a fat $80,000 cushion, nice, all right? This cushion is pretty thin, okay? But I, I feel that, you know, it's not like you would be adopting a budget or setting, and setting a tax rate with red ink, you know? I, I think that you can do it at 79 cents. If you want to, if you want to spend more money, it's, every penny raises 22,380 if you're interested, so.
One of the things that went on behind the scenes today is Rennie and I have been, had a phone call back and forth and talked about some stuff, and just want to bring it to the council, make it brief here, is, everybody knows, August next year, Mel is retiring.
More likely.
He, he, he's retired. So, not that the horse is out of the barn, but what we were talking about is the possibility of, my idea was to try to bring somebody in a little bit early, and if that was the case, we'd need some money in this budget. Rennie's idea was, well, we could still probably see if we could compensate Mel in the rears of things to have him help with the following budget, the following year. So, I mean, both concepts are good concepts. We're going to start the hiring process. Rennie and I have agreed that we feel that after, sometime after March, we're going to start a, if, if Mel's still thinking he's going to move...
Yeah, you know, one of the things...
We're going to start a hiring process. You know, we just want to, we want to get a, a very qualified person and find out what experience they are, and the strengths, the weaknesses, so we figure out what and how we have to manage it, so no hiccups, no skips.
So, you know, one thing, just to kind of clarify, I haven't put in a letter of resignation, but what I have, what I have told many, many people, that it, just because of the way that my pension is structured, it doesn't make a lot of sense for me to be working full-time beyond my 65th birthday. And for those of you that know me, if something doesn't make a lot of sense, I usually don't, I usually don't go that direction, okay?
Hey, Joan, Joan, you control the birth records, right? Can we adjust Mel's?
So I can tell you, you know, at this point, you know, because it doesn't make a lot of sense for me to be working full-time when I turn 65, you know, in August of, of whatever, whatever year is it?
2018.
2018, all right? I will tell you that, you know, that just because, you know, even though the law on being appointed zoning administrator is a three-year term, all right? I really fully intend to fulfill that three-year term, I, I really do. And therefore, you know, I'm, you know, I, I remember Rennie, there was a time when, when I was zoning administrator and you were manager, and you'd pop up in my office and say, "Mel, what the hell was that, such a...?" Okay? So I plan on being around anyway. And, you know, you know, the city's never nickel-and-dime me, and so I'm not going to be nickel-and-dime in the city. I, I want to make sure that, you know, this works for everybody. So I just want to keep that in everybody's mind, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere, all right? And I, my intent really is to, is to stay here. All right? And I, my intent really is to, is to stay here. And, you know, I think that that's a, you know, that's a system that could benefit, uh, everybody. You know, there might be some managers that really don't want the previous manager that close to them. And I can, I can tell you, for me, you know, Rennie and I work together. Well, I, I like it that Rennie's a deputy mayor. There's no, anybody that doesn't like that and it's because they don't have confidence or something. I, I wanna hear from somebody that, uh, that has some experience. There's, there's value there. So I, uh, it, it, I think it will, will work. And I don't know how much it does affect the budget, Mike, but I think it's good to, you know, certainly, you know, have some plan, you know, some plan.
Moving back to the budget.
Yeah. So I'm, uh, I'm happy to answer questions I, about anything. I don't have any problem. I'm not married to these numbers. If there's things in here that you wanna move and tweak and whatever, I'll, I'll tell you what the ramifications of every tweak is.
Some other questions regarding the police budget?
Sure.
Capital purchases?
Yep.
Proposed 60,000. That's us paying ourselves back.
That's just strict buying absolutely nothing.
It's just paying. Paying ourselves back.
Paying the continuation fund back in full.
Okay.
Any other questions for doing that early?
Is there any reason?
Bill, what was the reason for doing that early rather than just doing what we had planned to do last year?
Two, two reasons. One is I put 60,000 and then I continued to work. All right? Cause I wanted to see if I could get to a point hypothetically, paying it back and having a tax rate at 79 cents. Because I can tell you that if I got done and it needed to be 81, I probably would've gone back and, and rethought that 60 and not been suggesting a, a tax increase. Okay? So, you know, you know, I can tell you, you know, you, you, city council said two years. I mean, you can make that 60 turn to 30 just like that and you could cut the tax rate by a penny and a half. Or you could, you could move it from 60 to 30 and spend more money on something else. I mean, you, it's, it's totally your call. I, 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 so that's one of the reasons why I did it. The other is I, I, I'm a pay cash guy. I can tell you, I'm not in, I don't like loans. And I know, of course, I just probably talked about buying tasers over a five-year period. But, uh, but anyway, I can tell you that next year, you're gonna wanna buy a, a commercial cruiser. It's gonna cost you $50,000. Okay? So if you, if you don't spend the 60 now, you're got, you're gonna have exactly the same problem next, next year. So I'm just thinking, listen, let's just bite the bullet. Let's just get out of that debt. If we can do it and keep the tax rate at 79 cents, I just think it's, you know, just because, just because the city council made a decision a year ago and it was, you know, you know, city council wrestled with the decision. I think it was a well-thought-out decision, but that doesn't mean you don't go back and take a look at it and, you know.
What's, remind me, what's a penny on the tax rate due?
My penny raises 20, 22,380 bucks, something like that. The grand, the grand list did go up a tad. And our taxable grand list is, is, uh, it's really 223,827,546. And if you multiply that times 79 cents, it equals 1,768,237.50. And you may wonder like, well, Mel, how come that doesn't equal the first line in the budget? And the reason is, is because we have to give VV to the, some money back. Remember, we lost that appeal. And so the first check that we write in July is a check for 1,120 and some change. And which is still not the exact difference. And that's because I'm trying to, the state is, still owes me a response because I shouldn't have to refund education dollars. But I, so there is about, we're either gonna lose 1,100 or we're gonna lose, you know, 500 in this deal. So there's just a little, you know, it's a few hundred dollars.
And the school's not gonna give us back the difference.
But I, you know, but I will tell you, you know, you know, that fund balance, you know, you, you can't, you can't take that to the bank. All right? I, you know, really, I don't know what, what's gonna happen over the next 60 days. I have a pretty good handle on bills that are gonna come in. All I can tell you is, is that if you adopt the budget, this budget, you know, and set a tax rate of 79 cents, you know, there's no, there's no cushion there. You know, and that's, I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't think that that's, you know, I don't think we need to be the taxpayer, payer savings accounts. All right? But I, we don't like red ink either. Uh, but that's pretty, pretty tight.
No, I, I don't think we should step backwards in any, any way. And I, I think what you've presented is, is very solid. Uh, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here. And so I'm kinda wondering what people's feelings are as far as, uh, keeping it where it is or bumping it up a penny or two. Rennie?
Well, I, I have a concern because we, there's some money that is not in here. And that is for, um, Mel and Joan's compensation. And, um, you know, if we vote the budget without something in it, then at that time, if it's after the budget is voted, then if they're gonna get something, then we're gonna overspend.
Yeah. And that's what we did in the current year. And so, you know, I hear you, Rennie. And, and, you know, there was a time when, you know, as you know, we, you know, we worked on our budget in the first part of June. And then at the last part of June, you know, they set salaries and we made those, those numbers accurate. And, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's okay, but there's no question, there's, you know, a few thousand dollars that, you know, you're, you're, you're squeezing the delta between your calculated fund balance and what it ultimately is gonna be. There's no question about it. You know? But I, but I also, I think what, what the city council is well within its right. You obviously can't change the tax rate once you set it. But I think that you can change the budget. I just never, we just never did it. I think that, that really, there's nothing wrong with the city council amending its budget in the July. All right? To handle those items. In that way, it doesn't put the administration budget in a, in a over-budget situation. All right?
And, and if those numbers weren't done until the next meeting and things were retroactive, back to July 1, that would not be a problem?
Not an issue. Nope.
That's doable. That way, nothing special.
Cause I think that that's really the, the auditors really don't like the way that this got handled a year ago. Because we shouldn't be paid something that's not reflected in the budget. I mean, we're, we're being paid correctly, but I'm just telling you that the auditors don't, I know they won't like that.
Then what we'll do, what we'll do at some, some point after we settle what the, uh, increase will be, um, then we'll take and bring the budget back and, uh, amend it.
So that's that. Uh, fire department, I, you can see, uh, I think I gave you a sheet of the calculated contracts. I used $10,000, I believe. There is a little bit of room there. But I will tell you, you know, when you walk up those stairs out here, all right? Be easy, easy up those stairs. So there is a, there is a project out here that, you know, we need to do. And I can, you know, similarly, what I did with the floor upstairs, you know, don't be surprised if at some point, you know, I, I come to you that, um, I don't have a number for you. If I did, I'd, I'd put it in. But, uh, so that, that $20,000 cushion, uh, you know, really, there's a plan here, uh, that we've got to do something with this, uh, with the stairway. Sewer, I'm sorry.
5,000 dollar increase in station maintenance repair.
That's not gonna cover it. I, I doubt it. I doubt that it will. Some of it, it may, it may cover some of it.
Unless we get a lot of volunteers and jackhammers. So.
And sewer, uh, yeah. Yeah. You'll be looking at rates, uh, at some point here. That, 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 it's got a, it's got a negative cushion.
That sewer thing is not something we're gonna settle tonight though, right?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I've told you before, you know, I'm not, I'm, you know, you don't need to, you don't need to change rates, sewer rates for the next billing that Joan's gonna do on July 15th. But, uh, but I really think that you're gonna be talking about rates at some point during the ensuing fiscal year.
Sewer later. Rennie?
Do we, uh, have any idea what the school will be coming through with?
I don't think you got it yet, Joan, do you? School rates?
No.
Yeah. And so we, not only do we not have the school rates.
Like June 30th, they need some, like a 410.
And so we, yeah. So we aren't, we don't have that number. And also, not that it's a big deal, but you know, that local rate, which equals lost, uh, education taxes that we set. It's kind of like, you know, .0037 or .0039. We have to calculate once we get that, once we get that notice as well. So yeah, no, we'd have nothing. And we used to have that way, way early. We don't, we don't have it. Joan will get that on June 30th.
So there's not even any, any speculation as to whether it's gonna be?
Well, Mark might know. And, you know. Okay.
We have a, school meeting tomorrow nights.
Yeah. So the.
They have to wait till all the budgets pass around the state too.
Yeah. Well, they don't, they, well, the numbers freeze at some point. I know it's, I don't know who's left out there, but they don't get it to us early. Joan is spot on. It typically is. Right. And I think, yeah.
Cause we always wanted for our meeting and we never have it.
Well, in part, the legislature's involved. I mean, there's a lot of pieces, uh.
Well, they redone the process last.
Yeah. Yeah. So I don't have it, Rennie. We have, we don't, we don't have any. And this is a new year, right? Because this is gonna be the first year of the, of the consolidated district. So, yeah, don't have anything.
Anything or nothing?
Nope. That's all I have.
Any questions, Mel? Does anybody wanna make a motion on what the tax rate will be set at? Don't all speak at once.
Don't have to adopt the budget first.
Yes, that's what we're gonna do.
Oh, excuse me. Okay. Uh, right. Thank you.
Adopt the, um, manager's, um, proposed budget, um, as presented with the change of the, of $3,000 for the Economic Development Corporation. And to.
And, and the police, police department change?
Well, that, I think that that's considered his proposed budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
And set the tax rate, the current tax rate, is that 79, right?
Correct.
79 cents.
So that would be, uh, Joan, a general fund budget. I'm gonna add the $3,000. That would be 2,290,291 dollars is the general fund budget. Fire department budget, 165,117. Recycling budget, 75,000. And the sewer, uh, budget, 680,200. And the swimming pool budget, I think you've already passed. All right. I think actually you've already acted on, you actually already acted on fire, recycling and pool. I believe you already, I, did you, I know you didn't, I know you didn't act on sewer. We talked about it, but I don't think you acted.
We hadn't. No.
Right.
We haven't, Rennie made a motion?
I think one motion is fine for the, for the, the budgets that you hadn't adopted before.
Rennie made a motion that we adopt the budget as presented, adding the 3,000, uh, with setting a tax rate of .79 cents. 79 cents.
.79 cents would be great.
79. 79 cents, yes. It's past my couch time. Um, do I have a second? Mark seconds it. Open it up for further discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yeah, sure. I just think that, you know, first of all, I applaud, you know, Mel for keeping us, keeping the tax rate where it is. I think it's very important to everybody who lives in our community. I do feel that there's increasing pressure on the council and on city administration to do more. Um, the pool is, is a prime example. And I know that's been put to bed already. But at some point, we're going to have to steer the bow of the boat into getting more revenue into the coffers to maintain our, our infrastructure and our assets. Uh, this may not be that year, but, um, it makes it very challenging. I don't, I don't wanna say no, no to the pool. I, I don't want to. I wanna support everybody. Um, but we need more money if we're going to be able to do that going forward.
You're right, Matt. And not only the pool, there's many other areas, like you say, that just, uh, would help bring more money into the city and help with taxes and keep the money local. But, uh, I'm not sure. It's, it's a tight year and let's, uh, let's see where we go from here. And, uh, hopefully we don't regret. It's, cause we wanna continue to move forward.
Agreed. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Any other discussion?
I really would prefer to see at least a one or two cent increase in the tax rate, simply because as Matt points out, we are feeling pressured to do more and spend more. And rather than coming back in three or five years and asking for 10 cents, I'd rather ask for two now. I don't want us to be in the same position as we were with the sewer increase, for example.
Comments?
I kinda, I tend to agree with Jeff. I think, uh, just bite the bullet now and, and have a little bit more money in the, in the coffers rather than a little too thin.
One penny raise $20,000?
One penny raises 22, 22,000.
23,000.
You know, it's 22,383 dollars.
So a penny would?
So a penny raises 22,300. So, you know, two penny ra, you know, raises double that is, you know, 40, 45,000 roughly.
Well, one of the things we talked about, and we're talking, please, which is not part of this budget, but whether or not it makes sense to put out to the voters next time around to have a special fund created just for the vehicles and start funding that separately so that we're not having, every, if we're gonna have rotating every six years, we're getting, trading in a new car, might it make sense to have something in place?
Have you touched it, Chief?
No, I just, we chatted yesterday and thought, and I said, setting aside money if we weren't gonna do it now, maybe a little bit here and there. I also thought that would have to be a special fund.
No, he, he had talked to me when we were over meeting with Northline Job Corps. And he had talked to me about if, if it's gonna take a couple of years to get settled in. And after that, it'll be on a set rotation and everything should work out well. So, um, I'm not sure if that answers.
No, I just.
Your, but.
But maybe Matt had the.
Okay. So we have a motion that, that, uh, sets the budget, adding the 3,000 and the tax rate at 79 cents. It's one motion. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, if somebody wants to amend it, speak up. Jeff?
I would like to amend Rennie's motion to raise the tax rate to 81 cents.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Would you accept that amendment?
No.
Okay. Excuse me, excuse me. Um, okay. Uh, we vote on the amendment first?
No, the amendment.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the, uh, motion of, of the amended rate to 81 cents? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All those in favor of passing the budget as presented, I'm not saying, the rate's already set. Say aye.
With a motion, with a rate of 81 cents. It combines it.
With a combined, the motion, or the budget as presented with the rate of 81 cents with the additional $3,000. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. So the new rate is 81 cents. Everyone that is present voted in favor of those motions.
Okay.
Just, as a taxpayer, all of my other ads are off.
Sure.
But I really like the idea of increasing revenue as opposed to. But I really like the idea of increasing revenue as opposed to increasing your taxes. I think increasing your taxes is, it puts more money available for funds, but I think it's not very creative. I think increasing revenue is a lot more appealing to me as a taxpayer than just increasing our tax rate more. And I think, I think, I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I understand we've got to cover ourselves, but increasing revenue always is more appealing to me than just increasing our taxes.
One of the things that has been talked about as far as the pools related. They have been some meetings or a meeting that they're going to be doing some discussion as to ways that they can do fundraisings to help raise revenues. Not sure whereabouts in the city that we might be able to raise more revenues, but if anyone has any ideas, please, one of the things that Mel, one of the things that Kathy Ross here had sent to me is, and Mel and I started discussing, but we really haven't settled down yet, just too many moving parts right now. We want to get some of this stuff off the table, is Rutland has created a means to, for people that wanted to make donations to a specific project, whether it be a pool, the basin, whatever it is, the Boys and Girls Club or whatever it is related to the city, they could make a donation through the city, through, through the town of Rutland to help offset costs that were incurred and hopefully making those more vibrant areas. So we haven't talked about if we were able to do that, how that would function, because there's a whole nother ramifications of how you would apply for the money and who would be able to get it and to spend it and this, that, and the other. And one of the things we got to be careful of is every time you have a new fund, it's got to be audited and it costs you money to audit that fund. So we got to be careful.
I've spent the past, I don't know, three or four hours with three years of audited financial reports from the city, which you obviously know more than I do, but I really applaud the effort to increase taxes and I think that it's not mutually exclusive with also increasing revenue. The, looking at the outlays for the pool over the past few years, 2016, 2015, 2014, Mel, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like there's a shortfall of about $10,000 a year. So what we're talking, if we're talking about increasing taxes to cover those expenses that we are not getting from pool fees, we're talking about a half cent increase. If we have 2,500 virgins residents, we're talking about each resident paying on average $4 more to support, a year to support our pool. We already have a special fund for the pool, as far as I can tell from the audited financial reports. So that's, that's already something that has to be monitored and that maybe could be a venue for people making special earmark contribution for city expenses. But I appreciate that the city council in our community seems to be, at least for the pool, going guns a blazing in all directions, that we're going to put resources into preserving this asset if we can have new sources of revenue for the pool, if we can have a slight increase, a half cent increase in taxes to cover that $10,000 a year shortfall. All of those things in the short term might yield higher user numbers for the pool, a better pool experience. But if the worst possible outcome is that we don't find that new money, but we as a community are creating a public asset for the families of our community to enjoy, I'm actually personally okay with that outcome, too.
One of the things that we're going to be coming up is in August, there'll be another City Voice going out and we're going to try to get it out to more citizens. First one was, didn't do as well as we wanted to get out to as many, but it still, it got out there and it was very helpful and I did get some positive comments back on it. And I've already asked Mel to, his article, excuse me. And one of his things, if he accepts this assignment, is to write an article, 250 words or less. I have to throw that in there because I said I'll give him some of my space. As to where tax money goes, what do you get for your tax dollar? People are saying, you know, we should be paying, taking this out of the taxes. It's like, everybody really needs to know what chunk ends up going to the police department, what chunk goes to maintain the roads and this, that, and the other, so. So stay tuned. I don't want to give the secrets away. Mel's got a lot of them and they're all good ones. So I'm hoping that he can paint a picture so that everybody will have a real good understanding where these tax dollars are going and, you know, everybody wants to come and say, I need, you know, I need a chunk, and which is all well and good, and we want to be a vibrant city. We got to just figure out, there's, we can't raise the taxes too far because if we go too far, then we're going to drive people out of the city and our attempt is really to try to get people into the city. So we hear you, we really do, and we're working hard to use a fiscal, be fiscally be responsible and make sure that we make the right decisions. And we love input, but there's a small but here. And the small but is if you're going to take and throw a bunch of ideas out, get ready to help carry that ball to fruition because I'm maxed out on a bunch of stuff that I'm doing and these people here are maxed out on the stuff they're doing. We need help. It's going to be volunteerism. It's going to help us succeed as a whole. So much for my promotional speech. Okay.
So one of the things, you know, Sarah, there is absolutely no question that relative to the pool, I think everybody sitting around the table clearly understands that the swimming pool, since the city took over ownership in 2010, has derived its, derived its revenue from admission fees and passes, donations from the Fishman family and, and from the Water Tower Fund. And there's only a certain amount of revenue that's generated, I didn't mean Water Tower, I meant the Watershed Fund. There's only a certain amount of revenue that's generated from that fund and we have tapped that completely. And so therefore, you know, the, when you, there is, under the current scenario of using normal pool revenue and watershed money and looking at what the cost of operating, operating that, without even taking into account the in-kind work of Joan and me and Melissa and Rick and Jim and all these people, there really, we're, we've learned that the thought of not having a general fund supplement, you know, we may be just fooling ourselves to think that, that that day is fast approaching, that, that there's going to have to be some kind of allocation from the general fund. I just, I just don't see it. So we, it's painful, but we know it, you know, we know that. Mike, we forgot to deal with D plus one.
Oh, sorry about that.
But Reni was keeping track of the time and so anyway, D plus one is, we have a contractor that's working upstairs on the floor of the fire station that is about, that is about complete. And for those of you that have, have visited our stairway project, which is located adjacent to the falls, that project was one of the first projects that I did, or I did, I didn't do it, that I was in, that I administered, if you will, a grant to, to construct a stairway project adjacent to the fall. So that was done, I'm going to say, in 2009. If you take a look at it, it really, you know, there's a lot of deterioration that has occurred to that stairway and to the point that it's a little embarrassing. And we have an opportunity to use the company that's working upstairs to, to put this stairway back in good shape and it's something that we're proud of. And I don't really need to remind you that we, we signed a grant agreement that said that we would take care of this, this thing. So we have a duty here to, to take care of it. And so the last thing that we want to do is, is have a reputation that we're not taking care of facilities that we received grant money to do. So I'm recommending that the, that the, that $7,400 be allocated from the Water Tower Fund. I realize that, that typically the Water Tower Fund is used for, as matching funds and economic development and the like, but I, I think that this is a wise use of those funds. And we could turn to, there is still some room in the, in the Watershed Recreation Reserve Fund, but I don't really count a stairway. Yeah, it does lead you to McDonough Park, but I wouldn't call that a recreation program.
Amy Bar runs up and down those steps. Does that count?
That's good for her, that's her recreation, but I don't think it's community recreation. So I'm requesting an allocation of $7,400 to fund necessary repairs to that stairway.
I will make said motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion?
Very similar to the work of Mark.
On the pool, would you do this for cheaper for him?
I think he's just healed.
Actually, keep him rested because he knows, you know, there's another.
Another go around this fall. For next grade. Any other comments?
I'm good with it, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carried? Okay. Andy, how you feeling? Better?
Okay, so I, I really don't want to talk about budget report or fund balance report. I think I've talked enough about that. I want to move right to C. And, you know, David is a former city manager, so he just loves going to select board meetings and city council members, and so that's why he's waited patiently here. We wanted to give you a little update of the, of this project because it has changed a little bit. And so I've done so much talking tonight, I'm really tired of talking. So Dave, can you, would you mind just kind of picking up the ball on this one here?
Sure. And one time when I was driving, along with some, I figured out the last 40 years, tried to make a guess how many hours I spent in the meetings of this type. And I commend you guys for doing it, people. But I gave up computing after a couple of minutes, it was too much. But very enjoyable life. As far as the project goes, it really is, we've gotten a good team going and that's a major underscore of where we're moving forward. Mel has given you a little sketch of, it's really a pre-conceptual plan. It's a layout of where the project now is configured. And this was a report that came in, I think, yesterday afternoon from Stantec. And this layout has been endorsed by the state Btrans project manager and his supervisor. So the real change here is at the police station, crossing the road, and this gets by the DR building, which was a very challenging piece of this project. So probably it'll save some money by making the crossing there. It also lines us up if we want to think about where the sidewalk is going and presumably underneath the underpass someday sometime, which is a little bit of a related project in the sense that we would suggest you thinking about authorizing Mel to push the state hard. We've made an overture to the state person that's handling the sewer extension project and to try to get them to say, this sidewalk extension is not your responsibility for, as far as the local share, and it's not Parisburg's responsibility, it's a station project responsibility. So I think that might get some momentum if you're so inclined to authorize Mel to push for that. We do have a contractor, a phone call on Friday that we're going to be asking the state where their funds, what's their plans for that and to try to learn more about it. The layout plan that you have in front of you, it would be very good if you can indicate that it's okay. It looks like fine direction for where you're going, where you are at for the board. And what that does is it moves the project to the next stage of a conceptual plan. And we're hopeful of having that conceptual plan back in front of your board, being advertised for an August meeting.
Can you give me some point of reference as to?
Sure, yeah.
I was just doing that, too.
What we're looking at exactly.
All right, so basically, you know, the dark, the dark line, that is the proposed location of the sidewalk. So in essence, to try to get this thing in north, Danica Chevrolet is here, Kennedy Brothers is located here, Amy's Beauty Salon is really the start of the project and there's really a sea of asphalt out in front of Amy's. And part of this project really is that there be a sidewalk in front of Amy Salon, a curb cut leading to a parking lot to the north of that building for four to six cars so that the, there is a single family, there's a, there is a dwelling unit contained with that building, but this way, her patrons are parking in front, backing out into Route 22A, which is obviously taking your life in hands. But also, so it's accomplishing, that part of the project is accomplishing a couple of goals, all right? Making it safer for patrons of Amy, but also at the same time, having a safe route for pedestrians to make their way beyond there and to Kennedy Brothers, to DR, to the, to the police station. So, so this envisions a grass strip between the road and the five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk. As you get towards the entrance of DR, there is a large red building that is very close to the road. And when David and I and John LeBurge and was John, and Eric, or the gentleman from, Eric from Stantec went out there, I think we all really came to the conclusion that extending a sidewalk along that red building, envisioning a, a road, narrow shoulder, curb sidewalk, I ended up with visions of kids on bicycles. You know, the bridge already scares me with this sidewalk, curb, travel lane, you know, 53 footers. This is a similar situation, coupled with potential ice coming off that roof. Also, when you get close to Champlain Discount Foods, if you look at it, it's a drainage nightmare there to try to figure out how you're going to get a sidewalk through the utility poles and the drainage. And so we started to come to the conclusion of maybe, like, maybe we aren't going to bring this project to Champlain Discount Foods as the way we intended. And why don't we, and instead of making, here you're trying to improve safety when in reality, you might be creating an unsafe condition. And so we kicked around the idea of saying, listen, why don't we consider stopping the project here and having a crosswalk to the south side of the police station? There already is a sidewalk in front of the police station right now. The other side of it is, is that if you, if you do extend the sidewalk adjacent to the, to the red building and put a crosswalk there, I can tell you, people aren't going to take that route when they want to go to the police station. They're not going to walk by the police station and then walk back to the police station. They're going to cross just the way this is indicated. So if it meets the warrants, we would incorporate a flashing beacon, pedestrian push button actuated. If, if it meets the warrants, we would incorporate that into the project. And I can tell you, this is not about chasing money, but we're pretty confident that this project, which had an estimate of $305,000, if you can imagine this, between project management, engineering permits, you know, it's a federal share, it's, you know, there's archaeological clearance, there's, you know, this is not the normal thing. So you kind of like wonder, how can, how can a project of this become $305,000? Well, that's some of it, but I'm really quite confident that we're going to come under budget. City council allocated 10% of this project, $30,500. I'm, I'm going to, but we, if we can get all of the plans done and if the city council agrees and sees the wisdom in basically shortening this project, you know, we will, we will proceed and... proceed and continue getting the necessary permits and get this thing out to bid. And I'd love this to be the first project in 2018. I'm not going to guarantee that, but that's, that's our goal. This is not a five-year Dave Crawford project here, all right? This, we want to get this done.
You in favor?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. You're, you two are the, Mark?
Yeah.
You're on the safety.
The only, I think this, you know, one of the things that Jason had shared with us again from local motion is that one of the traffic speed mitigation opportunities is to do bulbouts at crosswalks. That may be something we would want to consider on something like this. I do support the rapid flashing beacons, obviously, but this may be another opportunity.
The other thing we have to watch is where the state highway ends and stops. It's out there somewhere.
It is. It is a little further down.
Okay, so we're out of there.
Yeah.
So, they're in sight, though?
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing, too, down the road, is if we're going to try to put a sidewalk on the same side as the police station out to the parking lot, which makes sense, they may have to do some changing in the present layout of the lane because right now you're tighter to the north and really not enough...
At the underpass.
At the underpass, and not enough where you get a lot of space on the other one. So, if there's enough tar there to make out them there, that we can make a little swing in the cha, the pitch of the lane there. Plus, it's a little bit lower there, too. You could...
When we were visiting, it bears for a rough... And really, was a bridge too far as far as finances, that's what it looked like, and that's why push back to the state, this is your project, let's push there. But StanTech says it probably will fit through there. Their preliminary, like you say, Mr. Chairman, there will be some adjustments.
Well, we really have two things on the table. We have this, apparently, and I'd like to move this right along and say, "Our people and family are going to need that."
Yes.
We don't need a motion.
It's good.
Yep.
You hear it? Consensus, you know, everyone is in favor of pushing forward.
And that is what you need. Now, we don't have to talk to anything about the sewer extension area.
What David is wondering is whether or not, you know, relative to getting pedestrians to the train station, all right? I think that there is some, I think that there is some wisdom in getting pedestrians to the train station. I, you know, it's not that there's a mountain of people living out there, but there's a bus stop out there, there's bikes out there. I think that it does make some sense to that. But having said that, I can tell you, I can't justify using city taxpayer money to extend a sidewalk to the train station. So, what David is suggesting is that the city council, you know, endorse or encourage the state of Vermont to consider an extension of that sidewalk to the train station. And I'm talking about investigating, I'm not talking about pounding the table, I'm saying that, to me, this is an, if there was ever an opportunity to take a look at it, in light of the fact that you're putting a forest main, a fourteen-hundred-foot forest main on the same side of the road, if there was ever a time, it's this, it would be this time.
I don't know if I mentioned, I think I did, that I attended a meeting with Amtrak at the partnership, you were out of state at the time, and they plan on trying to come back in passenger service on the western side of the state within two to three years. And they are foreseeing using the train station. I've got to set up a tour, I have got contact information, and I have a few people that are on the list that want to attend. I just haven't, I've tried to get some other stuff off the plate, and now I'm going to, sometime, probably be in August, do a, see about getting a tour set up for the train station because part of the economic development group was interested in trying to see if we could help get a resident for that location because...
Yeah, because basically, if some sort of, particularly if it's a nonprofit, went in there, they can essentially have the space free. They would have to do some promoting of the area, I mean, it would almost be like a visitor center as part of whatever they do, but they really want the building to be occupied.
If I made a mistake, but Fire Machine, was it that had to be a nonprofit resident in there?
I, well, I think, under certain circumstances, you can, it could be a for-profit, but there would be pretty tight requirements with that profit, but definitely a nonprofit can go in there.
I see.
I think it, in part, deals with what's being sold, and so, it's very controlling about what can be sold, even to the extent if it was a welcome center, and if you wanted to sell CDs about something in Addison County, right? I mean, it is really regulated. But I think that you, conceivably, you could pay market rent, you know, for a use. Like, if somebody wanted to use that as an office, you know, but they would pay market rent to the state of Vermont, you know, it wouldn't be a welcome center, all right? But you couldn't turn it into a coffee shop, let me just, let me just tell you that, because of, because of the restrictions based on the federal money that was used. So, it's, it's really not a typical...
So, move this to, to move this forward. Do you need a motion? Or just again, consensus of, is everybody in favor of having them go forward, move forward, and so what they can do to get this accomplished?
Okay.
Yep, who are in favor?
The other, and my last handout of the evening is, and this is no actual require, but I wanted to, this came in late this afternoon from Michelle Echols, and this is the first report, take care, first report of the pool advisory group. And I just wanted to let you, let you have this, digest it, to let you know that this group is, is working, all right? They're working. I mean, Jeff, you attended, as, you're not an official member, I guess, but that's okay. So, anyway, I just want to let you know that the, this group is really doing, you know, what we want them to do, you know, help us, you know, identify, you know, areas that need attention. And some of these things, I mean, I've already, I wrote back to Michelle, and, you know, some of these things, you know, we'll, we'll just do, you know, but at least give you some, and they're going to meet again, this is not the last time you're going to hear from this group. You can see on the bottom, they plan, they have, their next meeting is July seventeenth, so I suspect you'll get another set of minutes as a result of that meeting. So, I, I think this is great, really.
And one of, I just want to point out, a point of discussion that has come up here, of the understanding of Mel and myself, and I won't use the other person's name right now because they're researching for me, but we have a different opinion as to whether they have to follow open meeting laws or not. So, we're still trying to get that weighed out, weighed out, weighed out. So, Mark has got information saying that it does require...
It could.
It could.
It's definitely a great area.
I, I hope it doesn't because it's just going to slow down the process, I think, and it's going to be, if we can go forward without that, I think just, it'll keep interest.
Although I did, I talked to Michelle when she was doing this, and I had said, "Well, one of the reasons we're trying to avoid open meeting law, but have just a group come together so that they don't have to do the process of an agenda and minutes and all the..." And she's going to do it anyways, so if she's going to write minutes and have the agenda, then there's not really much more to...
Well, actually, I suggested that there be minutes.
It makes sense.
And mainly, and mainly, I think it was important that if there are minutes, then that means that the council, at the very least, and others would know what was being done, what is being recommended, why it's being recommended, and it wouldn't get lost. Because if you don't have minutes, then all of that stuff gets lost.
And I'd like the cities posted and available.
We're almost doing it anyhow.
Again, it's, it's, yeah, but let's, if it doesn't have to, but you do it, that's, you're on the plus side of things, and if it's available so the public can see it, it just, they, there's nothing hidden. It's a totally open agenda, everybody's free, and not trying to hide it, and it's rock and roll. So, okay, anything else, Mel?
That's it for me.
Okay. Well, all right, citizens and advisory council, no update, we're still hashing a few things out. Pedestrian Safety Task Force, George did say he would chair it, so he's going to take lead on that. He's already made some notes. Of course, the next meeting is July eighteenth, and I'll be in Maine, and Randy's going to take and hold it down, hold the fort down and do things. Met with Mel, George and I met with Northland Job Corps, had a very open meeting, and they talked about their wants to helping the city and how we could pull together, and a bunch of ideas were exchanged. So, more information will follow, we'll see where things go as, as we, the dust settles from that meeting. Thirty-fourth Annual Fishing Derby was held this, I've got to find the right pile of paperwork here, guys and gals. This weekend, last year, there were, yeah, participants, there was two hundred and forty-two, this year, two hundred and twenty-five, we're down slightly. We don't, not sure if Mother Nature had something to do with it this year. Last year, there was a hundred and twenty-six fish caught, and this year, there was a hundred and twenty-five fish caught. So, it was close. I don't have the financials for the previous year, but Joan did send me an email, seven thousand forty-one dollars. And that does not include some of the donations, like Chester ice creams, hot dogs, hamburgs, there was a bunch of items like that that were donated that no, no cost was, so, I mean, total, it's well over seventy-five hundred dollars. So, and it's, and these, Martha and Michelle really go out of, out of their way to make sure that this is a big success. And we're going to do an after-action meeting Thursday night at our house to try to talk about the weak points, the strong points, and try to improve upon it for number thirty-five next year. So, enough said with that. But I do want to thank Marcia, uh, Marcia, Martha and Michelle and all the volunteers that did help. I did see Lowell down there, he was getting ready to rock and roll a little bit while the band was playing, but we held him back, he behaved himself. The falls are lit. Lights come on around nine, go off at about eleven-thirty. Joan, brief, very brief, if you could, credit card update?
Have not touched it.
Okay.
That's my fault.
I am just right out straight. It's crazy.
No, no problem, no problem. No, priority, budget, no, understood. So, we are working at angle, people. So, I'm sure there's other things, but in the lateness of the...
Going back to seventy, I was of the impression at the last meeting that you had asked me to try and find a chair, which I did.
Oh, you did?
So...
Okay, who is it?
Stacy Raphael.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Good. She'll be it. George will, George has got plenty on this.
I know, I just, so they'll have to talk to each other and figure out, but...
No, and George, but George wants to be part of that, and so doesn't Shannon Mahoney.
Yep. I think they...
Yep.
I just...
Yep, no.
I don't want to have to take something back that I...
No, you don't. You don't have to do this.
And she's like, I do.
Stacy might be delighted to have it taken back, actually.
No, I, I apologize.
She's pretty happy that I had asked her for it, so...
Good, no, that's, that's good, and glad to see that we're, we're getting more and more citizens involved, and we need to, because there's a lot for us to do, and I'm sure we can't do it all and still be sane about it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, second it, and Randy seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, be quiet. So carried.